KLTV Sound check, KLTV sound check. KLTV sound check, KLTV sound check. Kltv sound check. Kltv sound check.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday Public Meeting of the V O C C. If you're able, we'll rise and the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the public with stand one ninety six in the thunder god in the liberty and justice for all.
As usual, I'll ask Commissioner Mortensen to review the minutes for us.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chairman. I did review the minutes of the previous last.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Any questions? Let me pull up who's online real quick so I make sure to see any. Seeing none, I'd ask for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Consent agenda will run through this. Under agreements and bid awards, we renewed our landscaping service for an additional year. We have a completion letter with Northwest Control Company. That means that all the work and all the building and everything's been done on the chiller replacement at the Hall of Justice Building. It is working better than it has in the past. It's a it's a tough building, but it's it's doing what it's supposed to do. Contract with Slate Co. for Camelot Reservoir Roof Replacement. I think we we talked about that last week. That one's contract is in. And then we have an local agreement with Southwest Washington Regional Airport was approved for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight with our annual four entities, Longview Council, the county or and the port help support that. And that's our share of doing that.
Well, we actually do have another fifteen thousand dollars a year we pay towards that loan.
Oh, on the field tanks.
So that that's in addition to the seventy-six.
That is true. We had we have a resolution. We had one last week on a different piece of property. Here's a resolution and remember what I stated last week, this is a four step process. This is step one that you have to do a resolution that we have to vacate a piece of property and then it then there there's other steps. And one of the steps does involve public testimony before that it's ever done. But this is a piece of property on Melton Road, also known as Allswell Lane. It's basically runs through a parcel that is owned by a warehouser and Warehouser asking us to vacate a portion of it because there's a lot of what I heard yesterday, a lot of legal dumping and stuff back in there. There are two homes on that road, but they're not affected by this. That's what we're doing there. And we have a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-two comprehensive solid and hazardous weight waste management plan. This is for landfill. We've had that's come up through numerous workshops and and talking. I think they put a lot of work into that one, so.
I think that's due. It's it's good for five years.
Yeah.
And the Department of Ecology has approved this draft.
Mm hmm. And correspondence, we have an affidavit that Commissioner, proceedings have been posted. Federal Energy Regulation Committee just a notice approving our annual wildlife habitat. And then Southwest Washington Regional Airport draft operating budget. And then vouchers in amount of three million, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Questions, comments on the consent agenda?
Actually, it goes back to the resolutions. Number five, I would support going and vacating it only with the restrictions that you have access in order there if there is a fire that you have access for fire control or such as that emergency situation. Otherwise, go ahead and let the warehouser have it, but make sure you keep access for fire restrictions.
Maybe Susan.
That's all part of the plan. They're going to design a cul-de-sac for those residences and so access will be available. Yep.
So I got about the same question. I'm not sure I understand this exactly. You're vacating road or property?
Oh, because we own the road. It's a right of way that the county owns.
Okay.
It's not used for residences, but it's an attractive nuisance that Warehouser continues to have to deal with folks dumping. And they can't close it because it's a public right of way. And so their request is to close it, taking care of the residents that are on that that road, you know, providing obviously the access for emergency vehicles. So they have to they would have to pay for it.
Warehouser would have to pay for it?
Oh, yeah. It's not a free giveaway.
So, okay, so basically, if it's a piece of property you're vacating, does it go up for bid or is Warehouser the only option and they they just have automatic rights to it?
If I remember the law correctly, that's 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 what we find out as we begin this process.
If you like, we have we have an expert on the screen. Susan?
So this, thank you, gentlemen, Susan Eugenous County Engineer. So this is a road vacation for a road that was established a long time ago. And the vacated it goes back to the adjacent property owners when the roads are vacated. This is their request that we're following through. And this is just the first step at this. Once this is passed, then we continue writing the engineering report. And then we bring it back for public hearing for public comment. Their their goal is to not have people dumping out in their property. It's both Warehouser and Sierra Pacific are back off of this road. And so we've been working with both of them on this process.
So so can you go through the process of I mean, the the basic question is, do we do this for free or who pays? Is it open to the public? Can I ask to pay for that property myself? That kind of thing.
So the process is ruled by R C W blabberdy blabberdy blah. Sorry, I'm not an attorney. I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head like they do and Calhoun County load code. There are three classes of vacation, class A, B, and C, and they vary on who does pays for the cost. And it's based on their establishment. And I don't know off the top of my head which class this one is. And I believe if it was one that was given to the county by waivers, then it just goes back to the original property owners. Because when it was given to the county by waivers, we didn't pay for it. So there that's why there's different classes of vacations. It depends on how we obtain the property. If they pay.
I guess I don't know until we get down to the process whether or not it's open for bid or what, Ben, right?
Okay, vacations generally are never open to bid because it always goes back to the adjacent property owners and it's the strip of land that runs through it. And it's either the adjacent property owner or sometimes it just goes to one side. It depends where it came from originally.
But you don't know who that is at this point?
Right.
Not off the top of my head. I have it in a file that I could dig up and it will be all included in the public hearing, which will hold probably September or October. And that will be advertised and the site will be posted prior to the hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
So this begins the process.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
Just to point out the obvious on the agreements, contracts and that awards, it pays for the public to realize how expensive things are and delayed maintenance in some cases is a cause of it. But just in general, maintenance. We build it. We really you should demand that we have the means to maintain it. And here you're seeing where we're paying four hundred and eighty thousand for this, three hundred and eight thousand for that. That's a lot of money added up.
Any other? Pleasure of the board.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Seeing no other hands, nobody approaching, I call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also vote aye. Thank you. Couple more motion items. Let's see, Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioner Sean Rowley, Public Works. Today before you, we have a solid waste interlocal agreement with Lewis County and Lewis County Disposal District number one for landfill disposal acceptable waste from their transfer stations. This waste is waste that we have been accepting for the past year. The agreement allows for both the county and Lewis County to give notice to a hundred and eighty days to exit this agreement and gives for annual tip fee increases in terms of C P I.
Any questions, comments on this?
You said we've been accepting waste from Lewis County for a while and it's just what is the reason we need this agreement is?
This agreement gives a little bit of certainty to pricing structures, both for us to know what we are planning to receive as revenue and to the customers so they can plan for their expenditures. This con or this interlocal agreement has been in the works for quite some time. It was a little bit more difficult because of the structure in Lewis County to make sure it's written properly.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the solid waste interlocal agreement with Lewis County as has been discussed.
We have a motion. See no hands, nobody approaching, I call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Next up, we also have a bid award to Hamer Electric for Azneed Mechanical and Electrical Services at Tenet Way Landfill. This is an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars on an annual basis. So we went out to bid for these on-call services. We received two bids back. Hamer Electric was the lowest. Now, we do not anticipate to need the entire seventy-five thousand, but we wanted to make sure we were prepared for any unknowns that happen. This would cover piping, pumps, blowers, and other mechanical equipment at the closed landfill.
And there are plenty of of funds the state required us to develop a closure fund to anticipate these kinds of expenses for what, thirty years after closure, twenty or thirty years after closure?
Yes, sir. So we have a plan for thirty years of post closure funds at the Tenet Way landfill.
So I'm curious, the I assume most of this is going to be, if it gets used, it's mostly on mechanical, the electrical squirrels eating the cables?
Yeah, I think that some of these items that need repairs out there are going to be both a combination of electrical and mechanical, either rewiring pumps or control boards or things of that nature that the system uses to control the variable pump flows, the kicks on and off. The slower fans within the flare and things of that nature. So it's they're pretty the systems are integrated significantly between both mechanical and electrical functions.
From the from the outside, if you could see past the hedge, you wouldn't see anything. So it's just sitting idle there. So we're we're not saying there's vandalism. They're just normal wear and tear because your pumps have to be active twenty-four hour or available for activity around the clock.
Hundred percent. Yes.
Okay. How much did we use over the past three years?
On average, we were between twenty to thirty thousand dollars on this type of repair basis. Per year. Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're being extra conservative at this seventy-five thousand. I don't mind that.
Yeah, you know, that's that could be one major part breakdown that we'll need to get repaired on a timely basis.
Including a replacement of a pump?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I just myself and the rest of the audience really have no idea what these funds are used for other than what you've mentioned. And we're curious because, like you said, there's a hedge and we have no visual ideas. So could you explain to me exactly why it would cost this much? To us, it seems exorbitant amount. And especially since from what I've understood in the past, we were supposed to derive some electricity from the methane gas that was coming out of the landfill. Apparently, that's not happening. Otherwise, that would cover such costs as this. So why this much? I mean, of course, there are electrical boards. There's electricity at times. But this still is a lot.
And I'll just go ahead and start with the difference between the Headquarters Landfill and Tenet Way Landfill. Tenet Way does not generate enough gas to produce methane funding. That project we're working on at the Headquarters Landfill, the Tenet Way landfill doesn't generate a ton of methane as it is. However, even though it's closed, it still does generate some, which is operated and burned off by a flare system. So when we're talking about the mechanical and electrical components of that, they do, it does fail. It can break. And we are required by, I don't know if it's, I think it's statute and regulation to ensure that we're flaring that off appropriately per permit. So that's one piece. Another piece of the Tenet Way landfill is the leachate system. So although it's been closed for several years, a decade almost, it still does generate leachate runoff. And we have leachate ponds and leachate pumps to continue to pump that leachate out of the system. So that's another component that we would use. If it fails, we would use this fund, these funding mechanisms, and then this contract to repair, replace, maintain. It is higher than what we would spend per year at seventy-five thousand. As Sean mentioned, thirty to fifty is probably on average. It is a little bit more to constitute a safety net of sorts for an emergency event. So if we have a hundred-year flood and our leachate pumps fail, which we've had happen at the Headquarters Landfill, thankfully, we had backups and we had a contract in place with a local electrician. We didn't have that at Tenet Way. And so we're trying to prepare in that event, you know, to have that available if we had a failure of some kind. I'll let Sean.
Sure.
Continue.
And then additionally, a lot of these repairs and maintenance is are going to be on parts that are wear items that just need to be replaced during the normal that just need to be replaced during the normal course of their lifespan. And so, yeah, I think Savannah put that right as well.
Okay, I would propose two different things then. First off, I believe when it was first proposed to have that landfill, it would be something that we would get enough gas out of, so it would be self-maintained. Now, I could be wrong under that assumption. That's what I had heard at first. And then again, um if we do give this amount, which is is a huge sum, um then the books will be open to any expenditures that you would have, so they would be audited. So we would know what you did.
Absolutely.
Maybe a a little perspective that that's, you don't see operation out there, but everything has to work. If if something fails, you probably e- expose yourself to fines from Department Ecology and whatnot, and I would guarantee you those would be a hot, a lot higher than the seventy-five thousand.
Absolutely, they can be.
Yeah. I think there may be some other the 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 those costs and those are somewhat unbounded. Uh how much do we have in the account now?
Off the top of my head, I would estimate between six and a half to seven million dollars in post-closure funds for that site.
Okay, and if I divide that by twenty years, which we have left, what number do I get compared to this to seventy-five thousand?
I believe currently, we're estimating um two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of annual expenses for post-closure activities at that landfill. So that includes this, that'll include permits, um subsurface monitoring of water levels and other things of that nature.
So that was your, your sort of thinking two fifty, two fifty K a year? And that'll carry you through the next twenty years and um there's quite a difference between seventy-five K and two fifty K. Uh, I'm assuming in there you buy insurance?
So we do have other internal costs such as insurance or um we do have annual permit fees still for closed landfills. We have annual testing and um environmental monitoring at that site too and other things of that nature.
We also um still utilize uh Turwak, so Three Rivers wastewater for our leachate processing, which we also pay them to do that, so that's additional expenses.
So eh we hope at the end of twenty years to get back maybe half of what's in there now? Just to guess. It l- l- let's say it's just some, some amount of money. How does that get back into the public hands?
So at the end of uh the post-closure, those funds would roll back into the solid waste and can be used for other activities related to solid waste activities.
And those other activities might include uh hazard waste disposal?
Yep, hazardous waste disposal, uh rural recycling, all of those kinds of things of that nature.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I also believe there are some concrete buildings and structures down there. Are they of any beneficial use to the county?
I don't know.
So there are still a few um buildings on site there, uh a large metal structure. I don't want to get too far ahead, but there uh are some plans in the work for use of those buildings or that area of space.
Okay, good. So there's security lighting and stuff around them, I presume also?
It should, it's, it, we, our intent is to have it to be a secure facility. Uh, it's com- it's completely for for access. There are fenced um security gates and it's all locked down.
Okay.
Is there still a truck scales in there? The weigh scales?
Uh, yes, there are still scales in the ground. Uh, they are no longer maintained.
They're not maintained, okay. That's what I was wondering.
Any other? Pleasure aboard?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the bid to Hamer Electric for as-needed mechanical and electrical services at the Tenet Way landfill in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars this year with an option to extend it an additional year.
Okay, we have a motion. See no hands, see nobody uh approaching, call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also vote aye. Thank you. Thank both of you. Sheriff, I see you on there. You're gonna speak to this, I assume?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, thank you. Uh the the agreement that uh is proposed before you is something we've worked out uh between the Callets Game and Anglers, Public Works and the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, quite a bit of back and forth, but the background on that as part of the master lease with the game and anglers to the range was the development of the law enforcement range, uh the referred to as a hundred-yard range adjacent to the public uh facility. Uh, we had to go through a special use permit hearing to get that updated last year. That that occurred, we got the parameters for development of the range and we've done so. Uh, thanks for the support from the Commissioners for giving us some funds to do that. We developed uh the range, doing some groundwork, added some electrical uh facilities, capability there, a fence and that sort of thing, and we've been actually using it. Uh, we're to the point where we want to expand it. The original intent was that this law enforcement range would be for the benefit of all law enforcement in the region, particularly Callets County. And moving forward to do that, uh we spoke with the game and anglers and they wanted something, some assurances in writing uh to protect them, that included uh they wouldn't be liable for what occurs over on the law enforcement range, which is understandable. Uh, we also reached an agreement, uh it's listed in there under uh Article ten, rent and security deposit of fourteen hundred and forty-nine dollars a year. And really, the, it doesn't say specifically, but the game and anglers have to pay an excise tax uh to the state for that facility, and they've been bearing that cost to this point. They wanted us to share in that, so that's, I believe, a one-third portion of what that excise tax is, so that's part of the agreement to pay that for them. And then the uh third part of it is a fee structure that uh we've uh put in place and it's a, for a full day use, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. For a four-hour block, it's seventy-five dollars. And of that money, uh twenty percent would go into the lead abatement fund, and then the rest would go into the uh maintenance fund to maintain the law enforcement range. So that's uh kind of the backstory and uh that essentially puts in writing what was the intent all along and protects the game and anglers. They wanted to, an assurance said that uh they wouldn't be responsible for what happens over there and it runs through the end of twenty twenty-five, which is when the master lease with the Callets Game and Anglers expires as well.
Okay. And uh one thing I might add, because we've, we've heard this comment a couple of times, is your activities out there does not restrict in any way the public from going out and using the facility.
It does not, no.
Yeah, we heard concerns that the Sheriff's Department was taking over the facility and that's, that's not the case. This is separate from that. It's, it doesn't affect what the public can still go out and shoot and do activities.
If that's the only thing I'll comment on that, I know the Washington State Patrol for uh probably at least the past two or three years has had an agreement with the game and anglers to use the public range during hours that it's otherwise closed, but as far as I know, that'd be the only law enforcement presence uh over on the public range.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, uh, so Brad, it's a nice picture of a snowy mountain behind you. Uh, I I did want to bring up uh one thing that is only of interest to someone who's a has a telecom back background. When you were on Zoom as well as on KLTV, you could see the latencies weren't the same, so your head moved faster, moved earlier on one screen than in another. Uh that really is an important fact, but 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 not for this. I did uh want to ask, uh the uh disagreement includes uh anyone else other than the SO?
Yes, it's worded uh for other law enforcement agencies, so highest priority we want to give to obviously the Sheriff's Office and the Corrections Department, the county departments. Then we'd have an open calendar for uh other local law enforcement, uh the cities, but also we have uh our current, the older range we use, Fish and Wildlife, uh use that. We've had some interest from the Callets Tribal Place as well to use the facility, so we want to make it available and use it as much as possible.
And and for that kind of orchestration, it's falling into your lap, it falls onto your lap?
Uh, for the scheduling?
Uh, kind of, the scheduling and just who can you, who who is a legal law enforcement agency?
Yeah, so that'd be at our discretion. We have a uh dealt a training program each agency that's gonna use the law enforcement range. Their range instructors have to come out, go through an orientation before we essentially give them the keys and allow them to bring their own uh staff out and use it.
And does this mean you're phasing out the crystal pool?
Well, uh, we're gonna be be using it a lot less. The other agencies are as well. It does have some benefits uh for certain activities. Uh, we have do certain sniper training and our SWAT team. Uh, they do some activities that aren't allowed under the special use permit up at the, this new range, so we're uh maintaining that. We renewed that last year for five years with Warehouser, which I think it's a, they're agreeable, and I think it's a good thing to maintain that as a backup and have that available.
Okay, and then uh several years ago, uh we talked about the the equipment that allows you to do these simulations in inside a room where you're, you're actually doing the kind of thing you see in the in the kids' games where they're, they're shooting people behind barriers, that kind of thing. Uh, did that ever materialize into anything of interest?
Uh, yes, yeah, we we uh were able to get a system uh last year that does that. We do have it set up here in the Hall of Justice. It's an interactive screen and uh basically digitizes uh handguns, tasers, uh batons, chemical spray, and it's a simulation, interactive simulation uh with the scenarios on the screen. So if you're interested in seeing that uh at some point, probably easier to have you come over here than us bring it to you, but yeah, we've had that up and running here for about a year and it's very uh yeah, there's an operator on a, on a laptop and the scenarios can go various directions. They can scale it up or scale it down depending on uh uh the degree of uh a force at uh type of situation and go up to lethal force or what we're working towards is de-escalation to and trying to use the least amount of force to get compliance, but it's a very uh high-tech, interactive model that we have and we've been able to use that here for the past year or so.
And uh are you happy with it?
Uh, yes, very much. And I got, in my background, I have Jordan Spencer, who's one of our lead firearms folks there and he's and yeah, and he mentioned we use it for the Citizens Academy as well. When they, it came through, they do a firearms, uh hands-on thrill firearms and also the simulation.
Hmm, excellent. And then one last really hard question. Uh, it's uh your crystal ball, you know, you mentioned the agreement with the game and anglers ends at the end of twenty-five?
That's correct.
And then do you have a visibility into what you expect to see after that?
Well, uh, as for the law enforcement perspective, we'd hope the the law enforcement range would continue on. As far as the public side of it, that's gonna be a discussion that probably should be uh starting to have that conversation sooner than later with the game and anglers or what that model's gonna look like in the future.
Okay, thank you.
I I think uh one of the realities is that since we accepted grants from the state, we've got an obligation to keep it open for a set number of years. So that's another one of those factors that.
Yeah, do you recall what that number is?
I think it was, I may be wrong, but I think it was around twenty years.
Oh, boy, okay.
Which we don't have that, it's less than that now, but.
Yeah, the uh the uh the reason to go down that uh route here for the for the public is that the the there may be costs involved in there and operating. Right now, we've taken great uh opportunity with uh the game and anglers who've done a lot and uh if if they pull out uh and they might be exhausted over this, I, we, we've got some hard decisions that we have to make.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the sublease agreement as has been discussed.
Okay. Have a motion. See no hands, nobody approaching, we call for the vote. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you, Brad, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Corrections, Maran.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You couldn't stay away, you had to come back another day for us?
I know, had so much fun. Maran Fox, Director of Corrections, this is Captain Chris Moses. The item we have on the agenda today is for uh an extension of our contract through Washington Healthcare Authority to uh for MOUD. As you know, we started our MAT MOUD program in uh twenty nineteen, funded through the mental health tax. Um, that's medically assisted treatment or medication for opioid use disorder. Uh, so we, we started in March, uh in twenty nineteen, and we expanded through this grant in March of twenty-two. This is passed through funding to our NAF Care contract. Um, for July of twenty-three to June of twenty-four, the amount listed is three fifty-seven, three seventy-seven oh four. And approval of this grant extension will reduce our ask to the mental health tax by seventy-six thousand. On page five, it explains the scope of what this funding can be used for, and I want to clarify that what we use it for is staffing and medication only. There are other options. Uh, we don't, we don't use any of those options.
So um Maran, I'm wondering if you can just share, just for the public's information, why we would take a step like this to provide medically assisted treatment for drug addicts?
Sure. Well, we are required by law to do so, and there's been case law that supports that as well. It's um drug addiction is a recognized medical diagnosis and we're required to treat that.
And uh there is a tie-in with the of the risk pool also?
Yes. Uh, so the medications used uh it as part of detox, so when people come in addicted to opioid, opioids, uh there's a significant detox and that is made uh it's, it's done more safely using these drugs. It reduces uh harm and reduces risks to the county.
It might be, um, because I I found it interesting, people always want to know what happens when you're out and uh and I thought the explanation expla- nation yesterday would would be worthwhile to share as to how how you set them up as they they move out, so we're eh we're not in a circle here where they're just coming back and back.
Sure, we uh we supply them with a seven-day, up to seven-day supply, depending on when they're going to get out, connect with providers in the community. Our medical staff will ensure that uh appointment is made and that connection is there. So that when they get out, they, they have the uh uh drugs with them that they can take and bridge that gap before they meet with medical providers on the outside.
Yeah, thank you. We, we've just had that question pop up to us uh time and again. Any other questions, comments? Uh, yeah, you may, you probably don't have numbers uh with you, but these are voluntary programs in the sense that while I'm in jail, you can't inject me if I don't want it. I, you can't force me to do something I don't wish to do. Uh, and then when I'm out, it's the same thing, but our intent overall is probably in a very provincial way that we, we, we want to we don't want people hurt in the jail. It exposes us to all kinds of problems, so we want to eliminate that. It looks like we're pretty close to that, but what we what we'd like to do as a secondary element is help people that would like help. So my question ties in, what are the numbers? Who of all those people that go through that, how many people actually proceed and and become clean on the first try, the second, third or fourth kind of thing? And those, those are numbers hard to get, I understand, but they would be meaningful to us, I think.
Sure, we can, we can look at working on those numbers.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
Additional questions? So if I walk out the door with a seven-day supply, is that a merchandisable supply?
I suppose.
Okay. Everything has value, not, yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I've been up here too much. I I also need to ask, okay, this seventy, I think it's great. You give them a seventy kind of a tether, you might say, so that th- they have no pain from their withdrawal. In those seven days, how much counseling is going on? How much uh contact with those people are you still having? Because that is the important part.
Right, so we set them up to be treated in the community and that seven-day supply is is part of that, in getting the, them the appointment is part of that. But once they leave our our doors, um our contact with them ends. So then it becomes the treatment provider in the community's responsibility, and that's why we're trying to make that connection before they get out.
I'd really like to have that changed, honestly. Uh, I believe, you know, we have, you know, I'm sure they have providers that are very competent. However, you have the bite, they don't. And if they are, I I would feel a, not a house arrest, but some similar program where, yes, they're where, yes, they're out, but they're not. They're on seven days probation. They have the medication. They're semi-out to where they're, they don't just get cold turkey. Here we go. You're on your own. Whether you go to to your provider or not is your decision because I don't feel that they have the wherewithal to make that decision at that point. They're drying out, but this is an extremely hard thing on their body. They are suffering. Every part of their tissues are convulsing at times. Uh, their internal organs are also doing the same. I I I know this. I've got information on this. But what I'm saying is if we could, um, strengthen that bite, uh, during those seven days with your departments, I think it would be a lot better, uh, result. I I agree with you.
I just. Yeah. I don't necessarily disagree with you, uh, on that, but I'm not sure we can impose something beyond what their their sentence was. We probably run into some issues with that, but but I agree, some handholding out outside would be would be good. Yeah, there, uh, what you're describing really requires a judge to authorize either under ITA or the new new program A AOT, uh, uh, the difference between ITA, you're actually going to, that's, uh, something treatment, uh, involuntary treatment act. That requires you to have a place at a hospital where they actually, you cannot leave. You've got to go through the program. AOT is the same thing, except you can do it at your home. But you want to be very careful about opening those doors because you look to me to be unstable, so I might seek an ITA on you. That's just my my fear about it's being overused. Any other questions? Aside from the fact that I'm not sure how that works out too well, uh, there's plenty of data out there that you don't stay clean unless you finally desire to stay clean. And that's important. And then another question I forgot to ask, uh, it's mostly for the for the for the public. You leave jail and you, uh, how do you support yourself? How do you find a job? Can an employer hire you? Will an employer hire you? Those are difficult questions.
And good questions. Uh, my question just has to do with the repeat people that come through the process, you know, is it? I'm assuming the judge takes into consideration how many times this person's gone through there. Is there something more than just running them through the process again where we pay for a period of time, give them the choice of getting additional help and then wait for the next time for them to come through the through the system? Or is there a point in time when they receive jail time or something different? Does you follow what I'm asking?
I think so. That's really up to the judges. So.
It is the judge that makes that determination.
It's going to be the judge that makes that decision. But I mean, from what I see, that when the judge sees the same people coming back over and over, yes, they they may keep them in jail rather than release them. Uh, it it does affect. It does seem to affect.
Are you seeing that happen? Are our judges actually doing something different than just rotating them around? And again, I I totally believe they need, they need chances, okay? And people who are in that situation may not get it the first time. It may take a few. I don't really have a problem with that, but someplace in time, you know, they're they're not willing to make a step. So.
I think it depends on the charge. Um, they, you know, they're not going to stay in in jail for a very long time for certain charges. It's just the the range of sentence on that is is low enough that they, the judge has to release them at some point. So I I think it, there's, there's a lot of different factors, but ultimately it's the judge's decision.
Okay, thank you.
I I imagine there, uh, I'm probably going to step out a little too far, but ITA can take into account the pattern. So if you're going to be involuntarily, uh, held, it it's because of a pattern of behavior. But before, when you go to court for a particular conviction, the they, the focus is on, did you commit that crime? Earlier crimes are good indicators, but they're they're not what typically is used. So we're, that's why the jury is never told what the criminal history is. I don't see any lawyers coming to spank me.
So so Marin, um, does ITA apply to people with drug addictions or is it mental health?
It can. Um, ITA is danger to self or others or grave disability unable to care for oneself. So those those factors overlap. Mental health and addiction are, um, not typically not completely separate. So if if they're gravely disabled, then yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Okay, pleasure, the board.
It's my turn.
Your turn.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Second Amendment to the contract with the Washington State Healthcare Authority to expand the Medicaid uh, for opioid use disorder, MOU D in the jails program. Uh, extending the term, increasing the funds and amending the state statement of work uh, for a total maximum amount of three hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars and four cents through, um, the twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Okay, we have a motion. They actually give you a grant with four cents on it. That cracks me up. See, nobody, no hands. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also vote aye. Thank you too. I appreciate it. Couple of things, uh, and then we'll turn it over to you guys. Uh, tomorrow, our, uh, Wednesday one-thirty meeting, we have a risk pool insurance allocation. Um, coming in, uh, technology cost allocation, parks habitat, recreation. Uh, the parks habitat and recreation comprehensive plan, uh, may be of interest to sit in on. I will say, uh, I think in, uh, September, you're going to start seeing some workshops. We're in the budgeting process now in September. You're going to start to see some workshops with the various departments on on budgets. So if you like to keep track of the budgets, look for those. Next week, all commissioner meetings and Board of Health meetings, uh, are canceled. Uh, I'm, uh, the only one here and and, uh, I don't want to sit. I'll visit with you guys, but it has to be someplace else. Uh, Tuesday, uh, then the following week, on Tuesday, when we start up with our public meeting again at ten o'clock, Senator Wilson and Representative McIntyre are going to going to join us. And you'll have the opportunity to talk over what they see at the state and you'll have some questions. They're going to join us up here at the ten o'clock hour and it'll just be, uh, I imagine we'll have some conversation with them and then you'll have the opportunity to have some conversation with them.
Uh, question about that, uh, it that, that's a beautiful opportunity. My guess is going to take a long time, so don't plan on a lunch date.
Yeah, I I I think that'll, that'll be fun. They're very gracious to come in and and sit down and just have a conversation with us, uh. Um, we're working on future stuff with our federal lobbyists. I have a, uh, an ask out to the Perez camp to do the same thing. So we'll see what happens. But anyway, that Tuesday, the fifth, I think that'll be interesting.
And then. Is it, uh, is it the intent of this board to make asks at this time for state assistance for?
I I have a couple of things I'm going to ask them to look at, yes.
But but we haven't discussed it yet.
No. I don't, I don't think we set up for a formal thing like that. I think whatever comes out in this, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, uh, Wednesday the sixth, Family Promise of Callas County and, uh, LT one, Mount St. Helens dredge spoil site presentation. That might be of some interest.
That's, that's a presentation for a program to turn that dredge spoil site into an active working forest with restored, uh, shorelines and some interesting strategies.
That that's the piece over by the gun range, right?
That should, yes, and it should be able to make money for the county.
Yeah, yeah. That that actually is an interesting project. And I know you know about it because you know Jim, so that that'd be interesting to listen into. And that's September sixth.
Who's, who's, who will be doing that one?
Jim Mall.
I'm sure Jim Mall.
Okay, that that definitely will be interesting.
Yeah.
And then that same day, you got the Family Promise, which is probably a way for them to introduce themselves.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's out, out by the gun range.
It's, uh, adjacent. It's between the gun range and the Tule River.
If you're standing at the gun range, just head towards the of the of the river and you'll be in LT one.
Okay. Anything you gentlemen want to add? We'll open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. The political and administrative Bushes seem to be rattling again about mask mandates and other things out there. Uh, we were fortunate that you came forward earlier and had, um, that they were not required in the county. Are those mandate, or is that all still in place to give our county employees the choice? If, uh, if our illustrious governor comes through with some more edicts?
I I think that resolution is open-ended, so it it's valid until it gets canceled by us.
Okay. Okay, well, we're we're counting on that. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, remember, we won't be here next week unless you just want to come in and visit with me. Well, have a cup of coffee, keep me company. Actually, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, would any of you want to come up and tell us what's the biggest problem you see in the county? It seems like we often hear, uh, people are concerned about. So I'm going, I'm trying to figure out what it is you're concerned about. Well, apparently, we don't need time.
Okay, e- everybody has noticed how much this county has grown. And I'm really concerned that it's not being guided. We we don't want problems with our exits. Uh, we don't want another Lexington on our hands. Um, going out Ocean Beach Highway, there's, I feel the the planning going out there, it's growing huge. I just, I I kind of worry that we're going to be another Portland with, uh, different problems. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see a little bit more hands-on with, uh, I know it's Longview City, so I don't know how much hands-on you guys can do on some of this, but, um, I I really think more guidance is needed for our growth. I really do.
You're concerned that we'll outgrow our infrastructure, our roads and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, especially, I mean, if Lexington is is an example, if Lexington is an example, already the school is too small for the students that are going there. And, um, it it's just we're going too fast.
So.
With what we're, how we're planning it. And and maybe I should be talking to the building and planning department. But, um, and and I know that the state, you know, four eleven is is state owned, and so we don't have any control over that. But, um, I see Ocean Beach Highway being more crowded. I see the, um, some of the stops in Longview being a lot more crowded. Um, I I just worry about our the livability in our city after, our city, our county after a while that that we need to plan a little ahead, you know, like certain areas need to be set aside for green acres or some, you know, green, green. I don't know. It's just, I don't want to lose the atmosphere that ambiance that our our county has. Because it's great. People want to stay, they want to be here. We don't want to lose that.
So so Flo, I I I appreciate those worries and and but it is interesting. On the one hand, we've got these concerns about un unrestricted growth. But every time you say the word, we need guidelines, we need planning, that's more rules.
That is true.
Government, you want government to have more rules regulating what people can do with their property. And that's, it's one of those constant struggles we have because, you know, the one hand, we don't want to turn the coun- the county over to developers. But they end up owning the property that they're trying to develop for profit, but they're also providing housing at a premium usually, but it is, it is a struggle. So within city limits, the city councils, of course, have have the responsibility for their zoning and comprehensive plan. And outside, of course, we have our comprehensive plan and our zoning are our guides that we use right now. So.
Is like, was Lexington a city or just?
It's incorporated. That's, it's our responsibility for all that.
Okay, well, I I think, I mean, honestly, that's the hot spot that I'm talking about. I just don't want more Lexington's like on the other side of the freeway because I really see us. If you look at Woodland, you'll see how they're growing exponentially. I mean, it's huge how much they're growing and they can't even get onto the freeway. And we have areas in on the other side of the freeway that can probably will be developed. And I don't want that to happen here. I don't want another Lexington, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I see it happening. And I don't, you know, I just worry about it. Thank you.
So, so it is, it is interesting because, um, Callas County is being viewed by Clark County as an affordable place to move to.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the dilemma we have.
I know, this isn't going to ease your concerns, but, uh, one of the EDC meetings I attended, they had a gal that did a presentation and what their their, and I wish I could remember the name of their organization, but they worked for the the state in providing data to try and determine how, uh, the growth in areas in Callas County has been around one percent. And through two thousand thirty, they're expecting that to rise to more of the Clark County area twenty-plus percent. So that's not going to ease any of your fears, but as my colleagues say, you know, it's a concern that we all have and and try to deal with.
So there is a state law that says if if, uh, a county grows seventeen percent between censuses, the county is mandated to go to, um, a whole different set of of, uh, planning rules and regulations. Part of what Callas, uh, Clark County already follows that because they've had a lot of growth. Um, we grew about seven percent all last decade. So seven tenths of a percent, most of one percent. Woodland, though, did grow at fourteen percent. But, uh, um, if we grow too fast, you're going to see even more rules and regulations that we that we don't have much control over. So.
Yeah, I I wanted to add, uh, a few few things to that. Uh, there there, if you haven't been to a meeting of the Planning Commission, you might want to do that. The Planning Commission is the one that will deal with the uh, the developments in the comprehensive plan changes. And you can get to speak to that. If you don't do that, by the time it comes to us, you will not be able to speak on the matter on any, on any particular item. I think the growth is not going to be, uh, like, I I I have a distinction between the developers and the mom and pops that, you know, they're, I have twenty acres and I got three kids. I'm going to cut it up into four or five acre parcels. I take five, you take five, there's other kid, another kid. I don't think that's the issue. But overall, you got to face the reality that, uh, as a population grows, desirable places will just be, uh, will have a lot of growth pressure on it. The way things are, we know that the family farm is going away because my bottom land is worth more as a tract home area than it does.
tract home area than it does is growing blueberries or and the question for me to you would always be, how would you solve this? How would you constrain the growth? And then corollary to that is you cannot have the growth unless you have, uh, the infrastructure, or I should say, in many cases, those are binding. How do you fund the infrastructure? We know I five, for example, by woodland exit twenty-one is a disaster. Yet I don't see any plans that say we're going to go from the three lanes to four lanes or anything like that. And it's very difficult all along there. It's a lot of dollars. So, uh, if you have any insights on how to handle this, I'm sure we're interested.
Well, um, it, it is interesting. Uh, we've been following the impact that the Lexington Bridge has had on Lexington. Making it a lot easier for people to get to the freeway, which makes Lexington a bedroom community for Clark, Clark County. Cause the, the differential is great. You slow growth down by not expanding infrastructure. You don't, you stop building roads.
Yeah.
If you want to slow down growth in Lexington, keep those exits crowded because that's, because that's a slowdown.
Oh, yeah. That, that's actually really interesting because along those lines, that is uh, putting a, an entry lid, if you will. You can also do an exit ease. Suppose going across Lewis and Clark Bridge turned out to be really convenient. There's a lot of undeveloped area on the other side of the bridge. But who wants to drive that bridge every day? It's already a problem. So let's build another bridge.
Yeah.
Well, I guess on the one hand, I appreciate the fact that we have a, a growth issue in Callas County. And it's kind of a creep from, uh, being Portland suburbs that crept into Vancouver, crept into Woodland, is creeping right up the highway. I appreciate that. And, but the flip side is, uh, I believe statistically out of a hundred and eighty countries right now, ninety-two of them have declining populations. That includes the United States.
Have, have done what? I'm sorry?
Have declining populations. We're not replacing ourselves. So as, uh, on, on a national level, we're going down. But at the same time, when you have the people that are fleeing Oregon for obvious reasons, fleeing California for obvious reasons, they're going somewhere else. Then other, other places are going to grow, but for how long is that growth going to happen? Before things, you know, maybe stabilize and they're not fleeing problems from other places. I don't think we have a population growth as far as we're not growing by ourselves. We're growing by people that are moving here. Either A, they're moving here by choice because, oh my goodness, Callas County is so wonderful. Or B, they're moving here because they're trying to get the hell away from something.
So when you said declining populations, you meant declining birth rates?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Well, pop, the population's
Population hasn't gone down at all. It's still steady. So the increase, but then our national administration is the reason for that. When you open the borders, you get increased population.
Yes.
Yeah. Let's not go there.
Our, but our death rates are climbing. Our death rates are higher because of our age. The baby boomers are, are coming into that picture.
Oh, you didn't have to bring that up either.
Well, tag on me.
Well, I, I hear statistically that, uh, Dennis and I will be gone before Rick Dahl. He, he will remind you of that. He's younger, you see.
Well, okay, let's don't take tickets. Okay. I don't know what number mine is. I'm sure I have an expiration date coming up too. Anyway, uh, I don't have a, a magic answer for the growth problem. I don't know that anybody that does because it's it's unforeseeable where the, where the favorite place is for people to go. I agree Lexington became an issue, but now all of a sudden that issue that we thought was solved has just suddenly exploded. Uh, how do you foresee that? You don't.
Yeah. The thing I'm trying to paint is that the infrastructure really is something I would say is pretty clear. You want to get that in first, if possible. And we don't have the money.
And that, and, and so, so you pointed out a really good dilemma that you have. I remember I served long before I was a county commissioner, I was on the boundary review board. And, um, we were reviewing a proposed annexation in Kalama. And it, um, the proposal was to go all the way out to China Garden Road um, on the, on the east side. So it was a substantial proposal to increase. And Callas County at the time opposed it because they said, you do not have the infrastructure. You don't have the water supply or the sewer supply. And until you build those first, you shouldn't be expanding. Well, their argument was, wait a minute. As the growth comes, then you've got the resources to pay for the improvements. Now, the Growth Management Act that I mentioned, we might have to do if we grow too fast. The Growth Management Act would allow cities, that give the cities the tools to not only annex, but to provide for impact fees, which means the developers pay a fee to expand roads, parks, sewers and, uh, water lines. That raises the cost of development, obviously.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we're there yet.
Developers don't pay the impact fee. I think that's
Woodland, interesting. You talk about that because Woodland Council was addressing that last night. And, uh, their impact fee right now is like eight hundred and thirty, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, something like that per, per unit. And that was done several years ago. And their new study on it and their, the workshop that held last night, and it has a couple more meetings to go, would raise that to anywhere from thirty-seven hundred to forty-two hundred dollars.
For me, yeah.
Yeah. Wow. Last number I heard was twenty-five hundred. Now we're up at.
Yeah, that was what was presented last night. So it'll be interesting to see how that, that goes, but quite a, quite a raise. Yeah.
So if you're trying to slow growth down, you would like take away four lane roads and make them two lane roads? Like Washington Way, uh, you know, maybe narrow that down.
Road, road rage might go up, but
The, the right way is you make all the peripherals outbound roads one way only.
There you go. One way out.
Yeah.
I appreciate the open discussion. You know, I'm reminded of a time I was up in Fremont County in Idaho. St. Anthony is one of the main cities up there and Island Park is a, a great resort area. It's one of those cities that's like uh, fifteen miles long as I remember. But it's only so many feet off of the highways where it's at, where they were having a concern with being able to handle the treatment, the water, all those things. So they put a moratorium on any kind of construction. Said, we're not going to do any more construction, but they didn't really have a plan. Well, I was in a meeting with them because I was, uh, Chamber of Commerce President in St. Anthony. And I said, why don't you just pass the fee on to the developers to do your construction? You need to have sufficient facilities. And they go, well, then they might want, not want to do the development. I said, so you still solve the problem? And I said, you know darn well, those developers will pass it on to the people wanting to buy the property. So again, if the demand is there, you, you, you have it figured out. I guess the opportunity always is when you're, where you're at now, you're before the game. But as much as possible, as possible, you've got to anticipate where this is headed and are there infrastructure things that can be done? And you say there isn't money available right now, but if identified that this is in the near offing, we ought to be trying to search for ways of getting maybe grant money or different things or where we can do those little jobs that are ahead of the time. Because again, once it's there, then it becomes a demand and we have to do it. Then we're locked into whatever the price is for that day. And you guys know that. I'm reminded in the city of Mont Piller when I was down there. Uh, we had a mayor that had foresightedness and he said, look, this infrastructure under the ground, the water and sewer is getting old. We need to start replacing that. So he raised the fee and in that Bear Lake Valley there, we were the highest fees in the, in the area and people were squawking. When I got in there and started getting involved, I was on city council, by then we were doing the very last project of that. And the whole thing had been replaced, every single line, plus they did a, had an impact study and a, and a strategic plan that said, we think growth is going to be here and here and here. And so they made sure there was water and sewer out to those places where the development would be. And we were now the lowest fee in the valley, in that Bear Lake Valley. So again, it, it is ahead of the game as much as you can. And I know we don't have a crystal ball, you know, but we do have some common sense and you guys are pretty good with common sense that I would challenge you to work with that planning and zoning and reviewing again what they think is going to happen. And make it the best you can. Try to find some funds, I guess, if possible from, from something. Uh, and maybe be creative, maybe figure out a way of, of being able to do that. But I totally agree that uh, we shouldn't have to pay for a lot of that demand on our infrastructure. If we can pass it on through the developers and whoever it is is using that.
Yeah, I, it, there are a couple of things you said that just don't sit well with me. Uh, grants is the easy answer. We'll get somebody else to pay for what what we want. That's not a good idea in my book. And then, yes, the developer pays a fee, but he's not going to go bankrupt just to please us. He's going to, the, the affordable housing issue, I mean, it, the taxpayer, the, the people end up paying something, all that. So any of these little intermediate schemes have a basic problem. We want to build something today that will be used over the next fifty years. So the scheme is how do we get the funds to build it today? And to me, that's what a bond is supposed to be. I'm building for the future and I'm going to pay for it over the next twenty years or so. But you very seldom hear that kind of discussion. And I think that is where we have to go if we're going to do this thing equitably. Now, there's a, there's a, there's a comment on the chat.
Uh, comment, if you want to tell your neighbor what to do with their land, then you should buy it. Doesn't matter if a developer owns it or mom and pop, private property is private property.
I, I think that's, that's a, at first blush, that's a first order top consideration I use. But then there, the next one is, what if your neighbor wants to put in his, on his property a LED, lead smelter. If he can constrain everything to his property alone, then I, I'm, I'm okay with that. But chances are he won't be able to constrain any of the pollution. So you are impacted even though it's not your property. And that is the, the, the juggling game everybody plays when they're in a society.
Yeah. People ask me, I tell them that's one of the hardest decisions is, is trying to find where that, that balance is between the rights to do what you want and not, and what kind of effect it has on, on the neighboring. It's, it's, it's a tough line to draw sometimes.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have a history of politicians twisting things. Like, to me, shall not infringe is pretty darn clear. But for some reason, it isn't clear to other people. And then when we talk about pollution issues, people start to think, well, I, I really don't like the color of his house. You know, and say, well, that's, that's, uh, beauty pollution or light pollution. And I, how do you deal with that?
Yeah. I had an uncle that lived in a cul-de-sac and he painted it a bright blue. And I said, man, uncle, what'd you do that for? He said, oh, it'll fade with time.
So my concern and wish is that our political administrative leadership organizations and administrative would stay within the charter in which they were formed. For instance, cities in the infrastructure for the cities and taking care of the services there, they do not have health and human services in the city criteria. Okay, counties now have a charter. It does include health and human services and other things. Our states stay within their charter of services. And especially our federal government stays within the charter of its services. Education and other things are not part of their charter. And if we'd get back to our basics, we'd all be better off.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. Uh, the problem comes from the realization, I, I think it was the Tokville said, uh, everything will work fine until the people figure out they can use the government to vote, vote them, with the, uh, money, hence grants and other things like that.
Yeah, and history has proven that that's the progression from independence and straight on forward till you get until you over, the government entities overdo what they can do. Excuse me, can do, the people can't afford it. And now you go back to the grassroots of a dictatorship, uh, directing.
Agreed.
Anything else? Okay. As always, we always appreciate your participation. We hope you feel this is a place you can come and chat with us. And, uh, we'll see you next time. Remember, we're not here next week. We're adjourned.
But we, but we are.
Yeah, I'll be here.
We're, we're here this afternoon, right?
Right.
And we're here tomorrow.